This safety thing's kind of cool. That's too bad, our one part.
Yeah.
Okay, we got six clocks, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting in order. Rebecca, can you hear me clear enough?
Yes, I can.
City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session, Monday, February 8, 2021, 6:00 PM. Anamosa Library and Learning Center via Zoom. 1.0 Roll Call.
Trump.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Mockart.
Here.
Zomba.
Here.
Stout.
Here.
April.
Here.
Note that all council members are present. 2.0 Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
For which it stands. Why. Under God. Were delivered to be just as well.
Rebecca, can you go over the protocol for getting your attention to speak to the council?
Absolutely. So for those joining on Zoom, if this is your first time joining us, you won't be able to unmute yourselves. So the way that we do it is if you can give me a heads up that you would like to speak to the council on something, we do that in one of two ways. You can either send me a chat and let me know that you'd like to speak when the mayor opens it to public comment. You can do that, or you can use the raise your hand option. On the computer, you should have that. If you have the newest update under the reactions button at the bottom, if you click on that, there should be a raise your hand option there. A few of you, I know when you're going to speak, so I'll go ahead and unmute you at that time. But if you are on a phone and would like to raise your hand, you do that by tapping star nine. So that's all I've got.
Thanks for those instructions, Rebecca. We do have two council members that are joining us through Zoom. So I'll ask that all motions be decided upon with roll vote. With that, 3.0 Approval of the Agenda.
Move to approve.
Motion by Kay and second by Jeff. Any discussion? Beth?
Smith?
Yes.
Mockart?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Motion to approve the agenda carried unanimous. 4.0 Motion to approve the minutes from the following meetings. We'll do these separately. 4.1 January 26, 2021, regular council meeting.
Some of.
Motion by John, second by Alan. Any discussion on the minutes as they were submitted? Beth?
Mockart?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
Trump?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve minutes submitted for regular council meeting carried unanimous. 4.2 February 1, 2021 Budget Work Session.
Move to approve.
Motion by Root, second by Alan. Any further discussion on those minutes?
Zomba?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
Trump?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mockart?
Yes.
Motion from Budget Work Session Meeting carried unanimous. 5.0 Public Hearings, none. 6.0 Proclamation, none. 7.0 Old Business, none. 8.0 New Business. 8.1 Resolution Awarding General Obligation Corporate Purpose Bond Series 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Did not catch who made the motion.
Rich.
Rich. Thanks, Rich. Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Maggie's present, do you have anything to add?
Mayor, I would just add that we had a really great day in the market today. And as you can see, UMB Bank of Kansas City, Missouri is our low bidder at 0.9553%. For a 12-year bond, you, I think, have now set our new low record at under 1%. We're very happy. I heard some discussion earlier before the meeting got started. UMB Bank is one of our most active competitive underwriters in the state. So they are bidding on a lot of our competitive deals. You will also find that you see their name. They have a separate department from this competitive underwriting desk that is their paying agent. So you make your bond payments to UMB on a semi-annual basis. And then they go ahead and pay all of the investors who hold your bonds in $5,000 increments. So there are two separate departments to that. Today, they were the low bidder. And I'd answer any questions that you have, but we would recommend that you pass this resolution this evening.
Thanks for that information, Maggie. Sounds as if we should, from the city, we should celebrate dropping below the 1% threshold. There's questions for Maggie regarding.
What does UMB stand for?
United Missouri Banks. So they are located in Missouri. You can see, most of our underwriters do not have a headquarters in Iowa. Some of them have offices in Iowa, but most of them are headquartered somewhere, you know, we'll say regionally here in the Midwest, a little over into Denver and then Oklahoma as well.
Thank you.
There's no other comment. Maybe I should check to see if the public has any question. If that is a no, Beth, would you conduct the roll vote, please?
Mockart?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
Trump?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Thanks again for bringing that update to us.
Thank you very much.
8.2 Presentation on Insurance Policies and Loss Prevention Efforts by Jackie Snyder, Snyder Weir's Insurance.
Okay, Jackie, I think I've given you permission to unmute. Star six, I think, is how you unmute on a phone.
Have you joined us, Jackie?
There she goes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I kept hitting pound six, so I apologize. Well, good. I offered Beth a summary of the insurance review for the last year. So give you additional time after this to review that if you have questions. You're always willing or able to email me or call the office with any questions. So I'll try to do my best to summarize for you. First off, I just want to thank you for allowing our agency to serve the city in this capacity. It's a true privilege to offer you advice and guidance on your insurance risks as you continue down the evolution of Anamosa and providing the best resources available to it. We delivered a dividend check to Beth in tune of $16,913.88. This is a smaller check than what the city is used to from the past. If you remember, the safety group offers this unique benefit to return unused premiums to its members. And how it's calculated is they take all the premiums in for the year, subtract what they need for resources to provide service to your policy. They also take out resources for the IAMU Risk Management Services that are available to all of its members, of which we, the city, has utilized in the past to help control claims and educate the supervisors of each of the departments. And then they come up with a number that's left over. That number is then averaged with the past two years, so it comes with a three-year average. And that amount is then divided among the members of the safety group. And the members who had a worker's comp performance mod, is what they call it, below a 1.0, which is the goal, they received a higher dividend than those who had a higher mod performance. The city's mod performance for this year was 1.86, which was a little bit better than it was previously at 1.88. The goal is to get at 1.0 because then the city will not be surcharged for its premium. If you get above 1.0, you're given a surcharge. If you're below the 1.0 mod guideline, then you're given a discount on your premium. Any questions on that? Okay. The insurance renewal is pending, underwriting. So Beth filled out some paperwork of the city's current status. They'll analyze the claim history, and then your renewal will come out. The safety group as a whole was said to anticipate a 10% increase in the premium. And the loss frequency of the safety group and the city as a whole is driving that increase. They have also seen an increase in ransomware that have put some cities into some ransom situations. So that's causing a 25% increase of the cyber policy that you guys purchased. And just as a note, as that cyber policy, there is some monitoring that goes on with that, which is how they found this ransomware that's been attached to the cities that are in the safety group. It also offers employee awareness and training. And then if you want to implement any additional IT cyber protection services onto your hardware system, they offer IT service for you to do that. So you don't have to pay for that to have an IT person do that. And for the 2021 renewal year, I did shop that the city's insurance premiums with ICAP because they had gone up quite a bit. ICAP is another city insurance provider. They declined to extend coverage to the city, given the work comp performance mod at this time, given that it was at 1.88 at that time. We are seeing a decrease in work comp premiums. That is largely due to a new director in the work comp division at the insurance commissioner level for the state of Iowa. So the rates will go down. The unfortunate thing is the city is not going to be able to enjoy that wholly because of just the loss ratio piece. As a whole, among the property and the work comp elements of your portfolio, the loss ratio, which is your premiums collected versus how many losses were paid out, has dropped considerably. So I want to send a huge kudos out to everybody for being more aware of safety and not turning in little claims to drive up that loss ratio. And the carrier has paid off two large claims that were pending in work comp. So that's helped too. But your loss ratio dropped from 112.35% to 82.4%. So it's moving in the right direction. Beth did sign the city up for the Ask Nurse Program, which is offered through your insurance carrier. What the Ask Nurse Program is, is that it's the first line of medical attention that's given at that time of injury. And when it's not a 911 call to where it's a serious emergency, it's encouraged that they use the Ask Nurse Service. That's going to help increase the mod and help get attention where it needs to be versus just going to the emergency room for a $700 bill. Since the inception of that in 2019, only one employee has called in an Ask Nurse call. So it's really being unutilized at this time. So additional education around that service and how to capitalize on that is needed at this point. The work comp side, we have noticed that there is one employee that has a frequency of turning in claims and running to the emergency room. And it's not that those are unnecessary. It just makes us take a look at it a little bit deeper. And so they were small claims, but I think it's important for the council to be aware that this is happening. And when you have little claims that come in frequency, it makes an underwriter with your carrier question, what's happening in that environment that's making that employee get injured more frequently than others? And is there proper supervision and guidance within the processes that he's following? And it also makes an underwriter question if there's a big claim coming with this person. Maybe they're testing the processes. So I'm not saying that's what's happening here. I just think it's something that the council be aware of, that when processes aren't being followed, it's easy for little claims to get turned in that maybe don't need to be big things. In addition to that, the claims have reduced. If we continue to encourage the supervisors of the different departments to use the claim processes that were built with the city supervisors and the IAMU safety leader, the processes seem to work to reduce the severity of the claim, which means there's less paid out on a claim. The claims are closed faster. We're able to protect the city from issues that might bubble up in the future because claims are turned in very quickly and they're closed very quickly. And it's better service to the injured person, whether it be an employee or resident of the city. So any questions around the claim performance of the city?
Well, Jackie, I'm sure all communities or all cities within this group want to fall below the 1.0 threshold minimum. You've pointed out maybe some shortcomings that we have or areas for improvement. I don't know how detailed you are or how much awareness you have. If you are, is there control measures we can put in place to meet those improvements?
Yeah, actually, the safety manager for IAMU came out and we did a field survey, excuse me, with Jacob. So me, Jacob, and him. Excuse me, went around and met with all the supervisors. And three key things popped out. Excuse me. That I was working with Jacob to get initiated, but nothing ever happened. One is to establish a risk manager to help manage these situations, manage the process, take advantage of the tools and resources that are available, help continue education for the entire staff. And several of the supervisors had volunteered to help with that. So I don't think it's anything that needs to be hired separate. I think you have some really talented, safety-aware supervisors or managers that could fit that role pretty easily. So that would be the number one thing that was identified. But I know Jacob was super, super busy, but I reached out to him multiple times to establish this risk manager person, and we just never got it done. The other piece is number two, I'd like to host another lunch and learn like we did in 2019, just to remind the supervisors of why we have safety awareness, why it's so important. The premiums are directly related to the number of claims that get turned in. Also, to help them share best practices, they had some great dialogue at that meeting to share how they're keeping safety with their employees top of mind. There's also an agenda that can be shared around lunchbox learnings that each of the managers can incorporate with their teams. And just to review that claim process and the importance of calling Ask Nurse first to help them control that element. So that would be the second thing. And third, there is an electronic safety manual that Jim Hansen's very familiar with, and he brought it up at the safety meeting. But Jacob just couldn't find time to get that established. So that would be the number three thing. That is an online safety manual that always has updated OSHA documents in it. And so for a minimal fee, the city can set that up, get everything in there like they want, and then it's open to everybody in the city to have access to that. So that would be the three things that I'd recommend, Rod.
Okay, thank you. Beth, are you aware of these as well, or are you hearing this for the first time?
I'm only aware of the nurse, Ask a Nurse. And we did go down the route of hiring a designated safety coordinator through IAMU. So we just started that in January.
Some of the.
So that's a great first step. And so now I think we team that person together with the supervisor. So they have a better idea of what that, they can start to build that relationship so that manager helps the supervisors get done what they need to in their department.
Yeah, she's made some onsite visits already.
Excellent.
So we think we can advance some of the things that Jackie has just pointed out?
Well, some of those will be taken care of by our safety coordinator. So I mean, they'll do some of these things.
Good.
Perfect. So lastly, I just want to share some items that happened in 2020 that are impacting your premiums. The city, like I said, added cyber liability. And we, the city has also added 108 North Ford Street Location. We added that at replacement cost. And then there were some vehicles added. And just as a side note, our agency worked with the business owners who had parklet restaurant locations to get certificates of insurance on your behalf to make sure that they were properly insured in the event something were to happen in those parklets on city property. Finally, the last thing I'd like to have the council think about before I get to Beth, and I'll be reviewing your renewal with her. But it might be good behind closed doors to have a conversation about some additional options for the city to think about from a coverage standpoint. One is the safety program is offering now an elite extension. It's basically a super blanket over your coverages, which boosts up a lot of your coverage limit. And it's $300 more per year. It puts the city in a position to have an unlimited amount of additional insured. So if that's ever something that's required. It also extends non-owned auto aircraft liability. So if you have employees that want to use drones to take a look at things, you're going to have coverage for that. It also includes malpractice liability for first responders and medics. And I'll give her the flyer when we review her policy. So if you guys have additional questions, you can talk through that, and that can be added at any time. There are some other coverages you may want to think about. One is violent event response coverage. That is not a new problem, but it's a recurring situation to where there are extra expenses that are incurred when a live shooter enters a city building. And there's some traumatic emotional trauma that occurs to your city employees as a result of that. And their want to go back to work and their ability to go back and work effectively in an area where they experienced some trauma. So this would help care for some of those expenses, and it provides some psychology or some emotional help to those people through psychiatry. The next one is above-ground pollution exclusion exception. So right now, if there is some pollution that occurs to some of your units that are above ground, there may not be coverage. It's very limited, so you can add this. The biggest one this impacts is if too much chemical is added, and it creates body, it creates some bodily injury or some liability exposure to property. So that's a good thing to kind of think about. And then there's also an elite auto endorsement, which allows the city to waive subrogation in the event of an accident that involves a city truck. So let's say the city is partially at fault, and the other person is partially at fault, and they're a taxpayer and a voter. Now the city is going to argue with them to have their insurance company pay half. It can create some hard feelings. This endorsement would eliminate that. In addition, it provides temporary substitute vehicles. If something happens to one of the city vehicles where you need to rent a dump truck or something like that, it provides that temporary substitute. It also extends coverage for employee-hired vehicles. So if one of your employees chooses their vehicle to run to the bank and they get into a car accident, the city would be covered if something like that were to happen. It extends new auto replacement, extra expense, locksmith. That one's a really big endorsement that has a whole bunch of benefits to it. It's also recommended that cities consider bumping their umbrella coverages. Right now, the city is at $1 million with a $2 million blanket. Over that, there's just been a lot of lawsuits that have been very large. So safety groups just asking cities to consider increasing their umbrella coverages. Any questions on those little endorsements or anything that I shared?
Counsel? Does not appear, Jackie.
Great. Either did a really good job, or I confused everyone.
No, no.
A little bit of both, I know. Well, feel free to call me anytime. Always happy to come to a city council meeting. I wish that I could be there. I'm actually in Benton Community at a basketball game for my daughter. So thank you for letting me attend via Zoom this way. Also, as just in your wheelhouse kind of note, our office does also offer investment options around IFRS support. So if the city is needing anything like that, just let me know. Also, group life and group health. So if there's any employee benefits that the city would like to shop out, I'd be happy to explore some options for you.
Well, counsel, do we have anything else for Jackie? Thanks for attending and presenting the city's portion of the refund. I'm sure we'll be reaching.
That sounds great. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
You too. Beth, there's no action here that I can see. We're just going to cash the check and be happy.
That's it?
Yeah. All right. 8.3 Presentations by Outside Agencies Requesting Funds for Fiscal Year 2022. I'll just go right down the list, one through nine. And if there's anybody to present from these groups, get our attention. Start with number one, Grantwood Art Gallery. Uh, start with number one, Grantwood Art Gallery. Bill.
Please state your name.
Good evening, Bill Spearsai. Uh, with, I'm board chair with the Grantwood Art Gallery at 124 East Main. And we uh submitted a written proposal or request. Uh, so I won't take a lot of time here, but I just wanted to personally. Make, make my pitch, I guess, that uh, we appreciate that we have been uh, a part of this program and, and have uh, received some funding. And we would like to just maintain at our current level of $4,800 that we're using uh, to help defray costs at the Grantwood Art Gallery. Our, our little art gallery is uh, totally a nonprofit. I think it embodies the spirit of, of what this, uh, these funds are intended for. Uh, in part and that, you know, our goal is to partner with this community and. If we get people to come in to see Grantwood and our art gallery and other related Grantwood things. They eat at our restaurants, they stay in our hotel rooms and, you know, overall generates economic activity. You know, we don't, we're not a business. We don't gain necessarily financially, but we are part of this community and we want to continue to partner that way. So. With that, uh, the council, I think questions or concerns? All right.
Thanks for.
Thanks. Good to see you all again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Second, uh, Jones County Extension Summer Camp.
Hello, everybody. I am Jackie Luxted with um, Iowa State University Extension in Jones County. I'm a youth program specialist and been partnering with Anamosa City Council for 15 years now. To bring summer programs to the city of Anamosa. We are hopefully gearing up for in-person programming for this summer. That's our hope. Last summer, we had to make a quick change and brought um, activity bags. Met people out in front of the library in the parking lot and we were able to serve 180 kids in Jones County for six weeks. With programs for uh, no cost. Um, this year, we're hoping to get back to normal where we would hire staff and be able to deliver programs. And I am requesting that Anamosa continue to partner with us at uh, $500 to help us be able to um, keep the cost lower. For um, families in Anamosa. Do you have any questions?
Doesn't appear, Jackie.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for presenting. Third, Jones County Senior Center. Just for the record, uh, for those that have, are joining us, they've requested the $5,100. Baton in the four hole, we have Jones County Economic Development.
Good evening, Jones County Economic Development. It's never too early for a baseball metaphor. So now the Super Bowl's over. I just wanted to say, first of all, thank you to the city council for the partnership that we established last December. I can't speak for the staff of the city offices, but I feel that's really helped Jones County Economic Development. Be more beneficial to have an office inside city hall. So we're much more able to communicate effectively and such like that. So I think it's been very beneficial. So thank you for allowing us to continue that. Obviously, we're doing a lot of things this year countywide, but some of the highlights that we're doing in Anamosa. Uh, or Anamosa adjacent is that we're finishing up the Wapshenican Trail this year, which should be connected hopefully by the end of this year. As we go out to bid soon and then we'll do construction hopefully this summer and into the fall. The downtown facade project is going out to bid currently that you all put out a couple of weeks ago. We've had one contractor pre-bid meeting. We're having another one this week because last Thursday was so beautiful uh, in the Iowa weather. Now we decided we should probably have a second round of that. And we have potentially up to eight different bidders that might put in on the general contract. So hopefully that'll get us. And that will have those for your first meeting in March for you to make that decision and we can get started this spring still. Uh, finally, we're working with the ASI signage out of Brunel. They're working on some final designs to get to all of you for your wayfinding signs that we talked about last fall. And then those will hopefully be here for you to look at in March as well, make some decisions on what you might like to do and then go out for bid fabrication of those elements. We're doing a lot of other things, working with prospective businesses. We're working with the Newby or the Bennett Building on some things moving forward. We're working on. A lot of just questions we're getting about the new rounds of things like PPP. And other grant programs out there for some of the small businesses in Jones County, including inside of Anamosa. So we're keeping relatively busy. Just wanted to update you a little bit and see if you all had questions on the work we're doing.
Do I have a snare related? You can have snare. Okay, I'm interested in knowing. Oh, I've got to find it.
While you look for it, can you move your microphone closer?
Sure. It may take me hours to look for it. Um, help me out, Beth. You know what I'm looking for.
So we had been talking about trying to get CDVG for housing.
Yes.
And so that's kind of what she was asking about, like.
Okay, yeah.
We haven't finalized any plans or anything, but we have been talking about it. And previous to me, Jacob had also been talking to Derek about it.
And that's one of the things that came out of, if you remember, a couple of years ago, Charlotte Sheckle was doing an apartment downtown. And it came out of sort of those discussions that, you know, not only should we be looking at that potentially upper story housing. But there's a lot of older housing in Anamosa that could be fixed up so elderly could reside in place. So maybe we can get some of those. Uh, I don't want to say less desirable, but more vacant homes. Uh, redone and energized, so maybe more low to moderate income families could afford those and move into some of those. Instead of having, I think at the end of December, we had what, 50 vacant properties in Anamosa?
It's a lot.
And so looking to see if there's ways we could partner some of that state money to help load of modern income individuals that could afford houses, those types of houses, get into those houses. But it might require some sitting match to the LMI funding. You have, working with the state trust fund of East Central Iowa. Working through a number of different uh, layers of funding to potentially get people into those houses and renovate those houses to some of the energy efficiency standards. ABA accessibility, et cetera.
I think that a couple of people have requested information about this to me.
Okay.
Um.
Yes, into my way. I'm happy to help them.
Okay.
Yeah, so depending on what they want, they may fall into a different category. So sometimes it's easier to go through someone that, that does work with program.
I, I think it was people that own places that they rent, that they would like to do some improvement on.
Yep.
And they would, were interested in programs that they were aware of that were available to do that.
Yep, absolutely. And I can help them with that and make sure they're getting in the right program.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Derek, looks like you're requesting 15,000.
Yes.
That's a 5,000 increase.
Correct.
What's the allocation?
Um, one of the main reasons for that is we'll be doing a lot more on the boots this year on the ground with uh, the CBG. That requires a lot of oversight with the different contractors and subcontractors and building interfaces. And that generally falls to, we named me as the project manager. So that'll put a lot more time for me to make sure I'm here to meet with them, sometimes Saturdays, Sundays, weekends. So a lot of that was based on that, but we're also doing a lot more or trying to do a lot more. And so we've asked both the city of Monticello for an increase as well, as well as the city of Cascade. Um, just to try to help cover some of that administrative extra that we're going to be doing over the next several years.
Do they also have questions for Derek? Well, thanks for.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Fifth, Jones County Jets.
So I know Jamie wasn't able to be here tonight. Um, they're just, they're same request.
For that, uh, Jones County Safe and Healthy Youth.
Jeremiah Hoyt, police chief for Anamosa. Uh, Jennifer Housman was not able to come tonight. She had a death in the family. Uh, she just asked uh, on short notice if I could come and at least relay a message on behalf of uh, the coalition. So if the council would permit, I just wanted to uh, relay that briefly. Uh, their, the mission of the Jones County Safe and Healthy Youth is to engage our communities in efforts to reduce substance abuse. Through creating and maintaining safe and healthy environment for youth and adults in Jones County. A study from the Iowa Youth Survey from 2002 to 2018 shows a 45% decrease in 30-day binge drinking. 11% decrease in 30-day marijuana use. Jones County Safe and Healthy Youth Coalition partners with all the school districts in the county, all three law enforcement agencies. Newspaper, media outlets, churches, other organizations and entities in the county, parents, youth and more. Uh, Jennifer advised, and I believe it's probably in the printout that you've uh, you may have, that funds are needed to support the coordination of effective activities to reduce substance abuse. Without your help in raising funds for the coalition efforts, the momentum gained on reducing underage drinking and other drug use in their county may be lost. She left a laundry list of uh, things that they've accomplished despite COVID here. Uh, I believe also you have this list, so I'll keep it short. Uh, just overall, you've seen some of the billboards, the campaigns that have been run over the summer and the fall, newspaper articles. The Cope Diversion Grant that we're currently working with in our law enforcement agencies. Uh, the meetings have continued, all of them via Zoom. Uh, law enforcement continues to help with things like tips training or alcohol and tobacco. And overall, Jennifer just wanted to say thank you to the council and the city of Anamosa for funding to date. Without these uh, contributions, um, they wouldn't have accomplished many of the objectives that they've been trying to accomplish over the years. So. She just really wanted to say that she appreciates that. And I believe you have the funding numbers, but she is requesting, I believe, the same amount for that organization.
That funding request is for 3,000 dollars. Thank you. Seven, Keep Iowa Beautiful Hometown Pride.
This is kind of the last year of our commitment for their, for that grant they received, our $2,500 contribution.
Beth, Beth, can you uh, move your microphone closer?
I can do that. Um, so this is our, this is the final year of that grant contribution or grant match um, in the amount of the $2,500.
Thanks, Beth. Number eight, Jones County Tourism. Does it appear anybody has joined us? Jones County Tourism is requesting 12,500 as they have in the past.
And I would say that they're 12, 76 that um, per capita amount. Previously, we had them getting that, the 12, five less the per capita. The per capita is actually a levied amount, so they should get that regardless. So I separated them. Um, since it is the general fund that pays the per capita. And then I put the other part in the hotel motel where it should be coming out of. So your decision, you can do it with, you can do it up to 12, five less the per capita in the other section, but. It didn't sound like that was really the request he was making, so.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Uh, ninth, Anamosa Chamber of Commerce.
Leanna, I think we can hear you if you'd like to.
I'm sorry. Um, first of all, we'd like to thank you for your funding for the past, um, for requesting the same amount, 12,500. Um, I think you know the, the big events that we usually do, Pumpkin Fest and then the, the Magic on Main. Um, we had to get a little creative last year with um, with some events, but we still ended up having a Pumpkin Fest, a modified one. And we still did some events for Magic on Main, but we do depend on the funding that we get from you. Uh, we appreciate it very much and we would just like to request that continued support.
Counsel, have any questions for Leanna? Well, thanks, Leanna, for joining in tonight and presenting. That covers all that was listed. There's no further discussion. I'll move to eight point four.
I, I just got a quick question, Mr. Mayor. I noticed there are several that did not make applications this year that did in the past. Is that correct?
That's correct. Um, I did contact the motorcycle museum. Um, they said they were taking the year off. Um, they'll probably come with a project for next year. Um, I didn't hear anything from Jones, Cedar Jones, um, early childhood. Um. I'm not sure if they just forgot or. And Starlighters, I'm not sure who's around right now that would have put something in for it.
Okay.
But Cedar Jones Early Child Development, I think that's Sherry Hunt. That's who usually does it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Well, I'm glad to see that at least we reached out to. A few of them to see if they had, if they had a need or anything and then just pass them over.
No point, Rich. So there was no action at eight point three because it'll happen here at eight point four. Eight point four resolution appropriating funds to outside agencies for fiscal year 2022.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Any further discussion? Any additional public comment? Beth?
Trump?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Motion carried unanimous. Eight point five, request for LMI funds in the amount of $20,000. Contingent on a $25,000 grant being received from East Central Iowa Housing Trust Fund. For one housing unit in Metal Ridge Edition.
Bryce happened to be on there. Um, Rebecca, can, do you see Bryce listed there? Can you unmute?
I do see Bryce's iPad, so I will ask him to unmute.
Hello. Good morning. Hey, how you doing?
Good.
That's good.
Have any things you've written out to us?
Um, basically, uh, got the chance to talk to Beth this week and we went through this, uh. It's basically a down payment assistance. Um, program. We did this program in Benton last year. With uh, the city of Benton and the local bank up there. And we actually did six houses and they had three others that they did as one big package. And so basically the city. The city puts money in it out of their LMI. And then EC cog will uh. Kind of do a match or put a grant with it. Like we're asking for 20 in LMI and then 25 from EC cog. And then that'll give a down payment. Um, assistance for uh, LMI family to be able to buy the house and have the down payment. Basically paid and forgiven if they stay there for five years. And then that allows, basically we get a house on the rolls. It helps get a younger family, get a good start in a new home. With the down payment assistance, they're eligible now for a conventional bank loan. And uh, it's just a good program. And it's just a good program that, the ones up in Benton, the nine homes, they really hit good bringing in young families. And just brought a lot of people into the town up there. It was, it was just a pretty impressive project. So we've talked to Tracy with EC cog. We've done the, we got the application and stuff ready. Like I said, Beth helped us out. She's familiar with the program and other projects. She's worked on another areas, so she was helpful and she had a good understanding of it. So we kind of came up with this for just doing one house because that was funding that the city had currently. Another option is to borrow against the LMI on housing development to do a bigger project. But as Beth mentioned, she was concerned with adding to the debt levy with the intersection project and stuff like that going on. So I, she, she has demonstrated a pretty good financial responsibility watching out for what might be coming. So, so we kind of looked at it that, you know, if we could do one, at least we're, at least we've got a chance and hopefully we can do one with the project with EC cog. And then it kind of gives the city and the community an example and opens up a gateway to hopefully expand on the project in the future to where we can, maybe next year we can do a couple and apply for it. So we had a good, we got a pretty good relationship with EC cog from doing the ones in Benton with Tracy there. And so she knows the house that we build up there. She knows how we worked with the program. So she was excited about the opportunity to be doing the program in another, another community.
Bryce, if I might add a question, please?
Go for it.
Um, I'm not real familiar with how they were doing in Benton, but how, how much did the city give for, for a house? Could you tell us?
In Benton, they ended up giving about eighteen to twenty thousand per house. And so I think the city's total was around a hundred and seventy-five that they put into it. And then what they did is they had a brand-new subdivision and they borrowed the hundred and seventy-five thousand against the LMI. And then they put a little bit of money in there out of lost funds and a couple of things to, basically, they were kind of looking at it as a spurring growth as well in the new subdivision. So it kind of had a dual purpose for them.
Okay. Thank you.
If money Beth has borrowed for the LMI house.
So LMI funds are paid, they're, they're accrued as taxes are paid. So it does take a while, and that's really why we only have the twenty thousand dollars in there, just because we haven't had enough time to, to do the accrual yet.
Is it, is it because most of the houses in Meadow Ridge are, are, are just now catching up, getting on the tax roll? Because it takes, you know, that year and a half, whatever. Is that why the amount is taking a while to get built up?
So the, the houses in Meadow Ridge nine and ten, those, we won't have anything from those until two thousand twenty-three.
Yeah, but even the ones in like eight, eight, some of those are, are still within that last couple of years. I'd say the bulk of them, so that's probably part of the reason too.
Yeah, so right now that's, that's all I've been able to set aside. The, the, the previous Meadow Ridge Edition, the total amount for that one's only like dollars. And Country Club Two, that have more of a set aside.
How, how long would it basically have taken us to procure the twenty thousand that's available?
So I just made the request for the certification last year. So the twenty thousand was set aside this year.
So it was a one-year?
Correct.
This is going to be kind of a slow process in the beginning.
It is, yeah. It, it will be.
Well, is there an idea of how many current properties could be refurbished using the funds as opposed to one house being built with the funds?
So a little bit different type of scenario, but let's say, let's say we did CDVG for current housing. So you could, depending on, you know, what the repair bill was. So let's say they average, I don't know, fifteen thousand per home. So let's say the CDVG, what's the ratio for CDVG? Do you remember? Okay.
So do you repeat that, Beth, into the, what he said?
Twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars is the max amount for using CDVG for a housing rehab. So let's say, let's say you had fifteen thousand, so you, you divided up more. You'd be able to do maybe four or five houses between the two funds.
It sounds like one to two years down the road, we will be back with a somewhat of a nice little pool of money to either give consideration to another new housing or refurbishment or to offer some assistance with bringing life back to the resistance.
Yep. So, yeah, it's just, that's just what we had to work with right now. So what's in, what's in the proposal?
So on the, the one new house option, how's the process work? I mean, traditionally, you know, you build a new house and it's, it's listed with the Realtor. This, in this scenario, there's going to be, you know, you know, a purchaser slated for the, the grant funding before the house begins? Or does the house begin and then there's an application process? Or how's that work?
So it should be the, the house should be built and then you would have the application process. So they would have to be, they would have to be able to obtain a mortgage. So they would have to have creditworthiness and all of that.
Yeah.
And they would be able to, have to be able to afford the house at the bought-down price as far as, you know, everything included too, taxes, insurance, et cetera.
Beth, I, I've got a question because I see, you know, you say that we've got twenty thousand LMI funds available.
Yeah.
But I could have, I could have sworn a couple of years ago that Jacob said we had ninety thousand.
I do not know where he got that number from because we, Sally and I both looked for it because usually it's a set-aside fund. So we went through all the old debt or TIF reports that are given to the county and we couldn't find where it was actually set aside anywhere. Um, so, yeah, so I don't know where he got that number from. That's what should have been set aside or what will be set aside eventually for Meadow Ridge, the previous Meadow Ridge additions. But we couldn't find where it was actually allocated.
Did we utilize that for the project downtown? Above Hotshots?
Oh.
We did some, but it wouldn't have been that large.
I, I thought that was LMI.
Yeah, correct.
Was it?
Dipped into.
The only amount I saw for that was about ten thousand dollars.
That seems right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we forgave additional money as well. I, I don't know if it was out of that pool or not, but.
Yeah, we did, we used some LMI money for that. I was thinking it was seven thousand that we used out of that. And that was the time when Jacob said we had ninety thousand in the fund.
Yeah, I'm not sure where ninety thousand is, but we did not find it anywhere where it was set aside on any reports. And you, you have to report your LMI set aside to Janine every year.
Okay. Well, that's, that's unfortunate that I was, I was thinking we had more sitting there.
I agree. Disappointing to hear that it isn't when we thought it was or were informed it was.
So if I understand correctly, like next year at this time, we ought to have a greater pool of funds from LMI that we could use for maybe even more than one house.
Right.
So this year we could use the funds to rejuvenate houses that just need to be fixed in the community. So in the long run, we would have more homes for people to live in that are affordable for low and middle-income people.
Correct.
I guess that, I guess that.
I'm sorry.
I guess, yes, that's a fair statement, yes. With this thing that you find encouraging, this would be way of door development. It would, I guess you would hope it would attract a young family with, with the young kids in the school, where that, the, I don't know, seven or nine thousand dollar allotment, whatever that is now. So not only is it, is it a win for the community, a home on the back end or on the tax base, there's, there's a benefit for the school and, and, and hopefully a young couple to move in and sustain a life there.
Well, it seems to me the same benefit is available no matter where they live, as long as they're in the community.
True.
Be nice to see some of these older homes taken care of too. They'd be less, less expensive to buy and, and more easily moved into with, as a first home for some of these younger people or the lower income.
Um, one thing I'd like, like to point out too, that currently, currently there is, I think there's two houses for sale in Anamosa that are, I think one's around a hundred and thirty, and I believe there's another one in that bracket. And then after that, there's just a couple, there's one on Caitlin for four seventy-five. And then after that, anything arounds in the countryside. So there's really not, you know, we don't have a lot of options there right now in the market. We are going to be bringing on four condos and three regular houses onto the market this spring that we are under construction right now. But as far as, if you go to Zillow or a Realtor site, the availability of homes in all price ranges is really, it's really tough. The homes that we've got building out there right now are going to be in that, they're going to be in that upper two hundred range. And so I think the option with this gives, it gives that opportunity to, to build a home and get it to where a couple can afford it, or a young family can afford it. But it's, I think there's just not a lot of options on the market for them, for anybody right now in the town.
What about, what about all these abandoned houses I'm, I hear people talking about here in town?
Well, they're, they're not for sale and they're not on the market. And so you got all abandoned houses, but no one wants to do anything with them. I, I know of people that have tried to buy a couple of them, but once someone's interested in buying it to try to fix it up or move it, it becomes, it becomes very, very valuable all of a sudden and they don't get the deals done.
Yeah, I know. I talked to you about that, Bryce. It's kind of a irritating thing to have happen.
Uh, I got a friend that had one bought, had it verbally committed, and then when they went to close on it, they just backed out of it and said, no, it's worth a lot more than that now because now someone thinks it's a project.
Yeah.
Well, and honestly, there's a couple of houses that I can say that you could try to give it to somebody and they would put more money into it than the house is worth.
Yeah, I think, I think as far as some of the old dilapidated houses, I think there's probably some different ways and stuff the city could actually probably put an incentive out there for someone to buy the house, tear it down and put up an affordable house on it more than try to rehab the house. You know, Dearborn's done a couple of those here in the last couple of years where he finds a lot and gets a house that'll fit on there and gets it repurposed. And I mean, I think it's, there's some different ways, you know, that, of course, we're just making more work for Beth. There's another program she'd have to write and take care of, but there's some ways to play with it.
Well, this certainly seems, you know, to me, a very good program to enter into. We can build that pot in the next, I don't know, year, eighteen months too. And then look at different avenues to repurpose existing. So, you know, we would need someone to approach us that's willing to take that on. Right now, we do have this one in front of us with Bryce.
Hey, Bryce, real, real quick. So like in Benton, that, the, so the high, the house is, you know, like normal, under construction, whatever. Is it going to be your typical listed on Realtor where people know it's available? Is it gonna, are they gonna have to, we have to solicit it to people or is it gonna be?
They, they all, the ones up there were all sold. The local bank up there had a lot of them. And so they, they marketed it. They actually had them all sold halfway through the process. So you have to do some paperwork with them. They have to qualify. But the problem is the price points you're trying to do and keep them into, you're really looking for the program to help sell it because you need to keep the cost down so it's still, can still be affordable. So adding that six percent Realtor
Yeah.
hurts on that. So you're, you're more or less trying to, but what you got, once people start finding out about the program or banks in town or different people in town hear that, hey, yeah, if you this would be an awesome deal, it'll be gone. Some, some young family or somebody's going to be like, hey, that's, that could really be a put-up for us.
Yeah. Okay.
And nice, the nice thing about it, like in Benton, when they looked at it with the LMI fund using. So not only are you creating a, a home that will help an LMI family by being able to afford taking that LMI money.
Bryce.
Yeah.
Um, you might want to repeat a little bit of what you just said. I think maybe you're moving your iPad around because we can hear movement on your end and it draws out your voice. Yeah.
Okay, so the, uh, one thing like up in Benton, the LMI, using the LMI money for this program, I see not only gives a, a family or person the opportunity to, you know, utilize the program, get into a new home, but it also gives the city the ability to utilize that LMI money that actually puts a return on them because now the LMI money is actually building a new home that's going to put a hundred and eighty or two hundred thousand dollar home on the tax rolls. So we've reinvested the LMI money into a project that is going to create tax base as well.
What would you say the annual income would need to be for someone to be able to afford the house that's going to be built?
I did not bring that sheet with me. I want to say it, it depends how many people are in the household. But I think if it's, I think if four, I think it's around sixty-something, sixty-seven.
For a family of four?
Yeah.
How does that mesh with the median?
With the median income what?
Of the county.
It's based on a percentage of the median income, I believe, okay? Like you.
It's eighty percent. Yeah, you, you got it, Jeff. It's eighty percent of the median income of the county. And they have to pass a qualification. They have to be approved through the board.
How much is it?
For Jones County, it'd be eighty percent level. Say for four people, income level is sixty thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. They have to be at that or below.
What jobs in this county pay that?
It could be like a dual income too. It could be the.
Yeah, total household income. So if, if two people making thirty thousand each or, or is this, you say sixty thousand nine hundred? Yeah, two people making thirty thousand. Or one person making sixty?
It also depend on the, the debt they have outstanding too. If they decide to buy a couple of brand new cars, it could put a real pinch on them being able to buy a house.
Yeah, they have to qualify for it.
It's tight. You get to a certain income and it's tight. You gotta watch what you spend.
Yeah, somebody with that income but not bringing a whole lot of other debt to the table, like you said, like a lot of other vehicle debt or credit cards, and they have to qualify through the bank.
Right. It'd be up to the bankers to help them make sure they keep their debt level where they can handle that.
That's, you noted that you had some experience with this program?
So the city of Cedar Rapids did the, the same thing with the time check area after the floods they had. Um, theirs was a maximum of ten thousand dollars was the city contribution. Um, per home and then the homes were more and built in the eighty, one eighty thousand range. They weren't quite as high of a price point, so you didn't have to buy it down as far.
Somebody under a two hundred and eighty thousand dollar house. Uh, and they're low income, they're going to be riding a bicycle to work. I mean, it's just, I know it sounds like I'm exaggerating a little bit, but. Two hundred and eighty is enough.
No, it's what, no, two hundred thousand.
What's your, what's, on building Bryce, if you're still there, what, what income, I mean, what, uh, price would you be putting on a house for the low end?
You have to build a house that you can sell and that, somewhere in that two hundred or less.
Two hundred or less?
Yeah, because basically you're trying to get forty-five thousand to do the twenty percent down in closing costs so they can do a conventional loan. Then their mortgage is going to be at a hundred and sixty thousand that they actually will be paying on. And then, uh, with their current rates, it does give someone the opportunity to actually have a pretty good.
I misunderstood you because I, I was under the understanding it was like two hundred and eighty and, and I was thinking this is going to be hard to get somebody low income into that.
No, it. You have to build it tight. I mean, it's. Yeah, it, it's not a lucrative, lucrative project or a high, high-end house. You're, you're trying to keep a budget point to make a, make a program work.
Yeah.
Okay, I do have one question on, go, kind of going on the flip side of this. What happens within, let's say within three and a half years, they walk away from this project?
I believe the loan gets prorated at that point. And so they have to pay back part of the, uh, so if they don't stay there five years, they have to pay the prorated portion of the loan back.
Well, and you and I both know saying that they have to pay it back is, is good, but. What happens if in three and a half years you prorate it and they don't have the funds to pay back and file bankruptcy and?
Um, it would be against the house. So it would depend how the lien would be against the house and where the bank was at in the mortgage, but at that point. You're still going to have a house with the value and the taxes being paid on it. So. Whereas if someone does do that. They're hurting themselves, but there's really no burn to the city for it. You know, it's not gonna. It's just the idea that that was a program they got taken advantage of, someone else didn't get, they could have used it better.
Right, you know, I just want to kind of play the devil's advocate on that and. Say what is the worst case scenario and what is the repercussions of it?
Yeah, really it would be, it would be someone used a program that could have been there for somebody else to use. At the end of the day, the city's still going to have a house that's paying taxes. And if there's a mortgage there that, you know, if there's a lien, again, because this is a loan. So there's going to be that lien on the house. At that point, it would probably pay back to the city, depending on what the house sold for out of foreclosure.
Yeah, eh, one more quick question Bryce. So since we're just doing one, like in Benton, I suppose this all went through the bank up there, but. As far as the applicant, like say there's, I don't know, five young couples that are interested in it and, and apply, is there some sort of a, find an application process? But I don't know, is there ever like an interview process to kind of get a feel for, you know, who, who would be the best kind of fit for this?
No, it, that'd be. That would be more choose and favorites.
So I'm saying if, if there's like, if we basi, it's basically the first come, first served, first person that applies.
It's going to be the first person that applies. Well, no, you could have ten people apply. It's going to be the first one that gets approved.
Okay.
It's going to be the first person that can get approved and lock up the loan at the bank. Qualify for the program and have everything in place. And what we saw in Benton, um, they had about a seventy-five percent success rate on those that applied. But they had so many people that were wanting into those nine houses that they had people applying. And then, like I say, they had them all done. But, uh. As they filled in, the people that were getting in there, it was, I mean, you're like, there's no guarantees with anything, but it was all nice young families that were.
Hey Bryce, you're kind of cutting in and out.
Sorry, I'm, I'm on my tablet in my truck, so it's not the greatest.
Well, offside of the road.
I am. I pulled, I pulled in the driveway about five minutes ago.
Okay, very good discussion on this. Uh, we don't want to cut anybody short. Does the council have any other questions?
Oh, and I guess one more thing Rod, sorry to interrupt, but, and. You guys might have already said it and it says so in the letter, but. If the grant through EC cog does not pass, then this commitment goes void. Because it doesn't do any good without the EC cog, you know, supplementing it. So if the city, city commits to their portion of the funding, then we send that on to EC cog for their board to approve. And if they approve it, then we got a project. If, if someone else gets in front of us in the approval process, it would go back and we'd have to break in at some point.
Well, there's the information, the details to it. City is looking to be a partner in this. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
A motion by Rich, second by Jeff. Uh, and, and just, I'm going to note, which I'm not ma, trying to make a motion or modify for you. Uh, it is contingent. Uh, partnership or the, uh, funds also available from the, uh, EC cog.
Well, yeah, it's just basically the way it's laid out, you know, contingent on the grant being received, so.
Any other discussion from council? Any public comment? Uh, Beth, would you conduct the vote please?
From?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
Stout?
Yes.
Beth? No. Lockhart?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
The motion carried, uh, of four to one, four, four yeas in favor, one nay opposed. Thanks Bryce for, uh. Presenting.
Yep, well, thank you guys. You have a good night. Don't stay there all night.
Eight point six, resolution setting the date of February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one for the public hearing. On the proposed property tax levy for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Baga.
Motion by Kay, second by John. Any further discussion? No?
Smith? Yes. Lockhart?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
From?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Eight point seven, review and approval of current bills. Move to approve. A motion by Alan, approved, second by Rich. Any further discussion?
The only question I had on the, the salt purchase from Cargill for six thousand eighty-six dollars. Are, are we able to buy the salt from DOT out here?
The, we are on the DOT bid and it comes from Cargill.
So, oh, so we just pay Cargill direct? We don't pay the state, the state? Okay.
No, they get their own deliveries. We're just on the DOT bid for salt.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, I've got a question on the bill to infrastructure technology solutions. Is that no longer Phil? Are we using somebody else or? It's for the Sonic wall renewal?
Oh, that's for the police station.
Okay.
Is that the, the, the service renewal as far as monitoring the firewall? Is that what that is for the year?
Correct.
Well. Every, every year you, for Sonic wall, you've got to repay their maintenance and so forth. So. That's, that's what that renewal is to continue getting the updates.
Any other inquiries? You know, a motion by Alan, second by Rich to approve payment. And Beth?
Lockhart?
Yes.
Zomba?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
April?
Yeah.
From?
Yes.
Yeah.
Excuse me, motion to approve carried unanimous. This is one point zero city administrators report.
It's just a surprise, I guess. Um, we've just been really busy. We're in the process of, um. Getting everything into the new accounting system. Um, we're, we're working diligently and we're hoping to have, go live in June. I cannot wait. I just wish we were doing it tomorrow.
So is the audit kicked off next week?
So the audit will probably do some stuff next week that we've been postponed and we've had to file an extension because I believe the audits are all a little behind because of the virtual. Aspect of them. So our audit doesn't technically have to be filed until June now, and so they're gonna, they're looking at doing. The more intense portion of it, the first part of March now. We've been postponed about. Which I'm fine with.
Uh, council having questions for Beth regarding the city administrative report. Well, good luck with it all. Uh, two point zero mayor and council report. Two point one mayor's report. I just want to throw a plug in, uh, the Valentine's Day Gala fundraiser is Sunday, February fourteenth. At the Val Art. Building downtown. There's a four thirty social, five thirty dinner, which is being catered in by Stone City, uh, general store. Uh, there'll be a live and silent auction partaking. The funds will support, uh, the American Gothic statue and bringing it to Anamosa. Uh, hopefully for, uh, the upcoming season with RagBri and to make it its permanent resting place. Uh, tickets are available. You can, if you're interested, you can, uh, reach out to chamber director. Uh, Leanna Boone and also Casey Orton. I don't have anything additional, so two point two council reports.
Now, emergency management had a meeting mainly budget. And last Saturday they had what? Five hundred doses down here for the schools and stuff and giving their shots, so. And then Brenda said after that, hopefully they start getting more in for the over sixty-five and start getting, getting more in. At least it's starting.
And I believe I heard that there is something for this weekend, more with the public now?
I, I didn't get an email yet on it. I don't know Rod.
Just thinking that they were expecting more to come in.
Hopefully.
Open it up for more of the public.
Yeah.
Parks and Rec met last Wednesday and, um, a whole lot. They're still working on, uh, maybe replacing some LED light bulbs in the LCC. Um, and the other thing that was news to me was, uh, sounds like kind of reestablishing the relationship. Um, as far as maintenance and manpower from the prison and there's been a kind of a short, uh, gap there, but, uh. I know we talked about the parking lot over there by the St. Pat's. Um, ball field. We're talking about blacktopping, but actually it sounds like, um, the prison's interested in helping us out and actually providing prison labor to, to frame it up and do it in concrete. Um, it sounds like the prison's on board with paying for at least a good portion of the, the material and providing the labor for the guys to frame it up, so. That's, um, that's good. I think they, they're planning the summer maybe to help with some, um, some work at the LCC, maybe tearing up some tiles, doing some flooring kind of stuff, so. That's, that's good news.
Very good. Fingers crossed that we were able to utilize that resource. It's, it's great to have that available to us. Any other council reports?
Still waiting for the snow and melt so I can get a fund in the road. It keeps coming down.
Think you could probably just, uh, you're gonna be waiting a little bit, I think.
Yeah, maybe spring. I've been a lot of snow, a lot of snow this year.
All right, uh, three point zero, public comment for items not on the agenda. Rebecca, do you have anybody out there?
I don't see anybody.
All right. With that, four point zero adjournment.
Zomba?
Motion by John, second by Alan. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Close me. The German carried unanimous. Thanks everyone.